Welcome, everybody, to today's city council meeting. Today, Monday, August 14, 2023. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Present.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. We have an invocation today by Mr. Corners from the Series First Baptist Church, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please stand.
Let's pray together. Our Heavenly Father, I ask you for your blessing this night. Please extend it to our city as we do business here. Help us to be a community who knows your peace and prospers. We remember the word of the scripture, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." And we know by extension, as a community, just takes you, we will know your blessing. Watch over our mayor and the council members as they do their due diligence, as they seek to faithfully exercise their duties, give them integrity, and help as they do what is asked of them. We ask for your blessing upon our men and women in law enforcement. We ask for your blessing upon our firefighters, emergency crews. May you help them to serve the community well. Help us to be a community who is faithful to serve one another, caring for our fellow citizens. Protect us from foolish policies. Please assist us in the faithful management of our community resources. Give us grace that we might do the business of this community to your glory. We pray in the name of the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Master.
Pledge of Allegiance, we declare the United States of America to the Republic of America and one nation, united in the heart of each other.
Welcome, everyone. Today, we have two presentations, and the first presentation will be on Report on the Homeless by Lieutenant Johnston. Welcome, sir. How are you doing today? Looking sharp.
Thank you. A good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff. My name is Trent Johnson. I'm the lieutenant assigned to manage code enforcement. Today, we'll be presenting on the homeless issues in Series. And before I get started, I would like to say thank you to the mayor and Councilmember Martinez for attending our dinner on Saturday night, the SWAT Association Dinner. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
You might have missed Councilmember Martinez that night, so. I invited Lenell Fuller with St. Louis County Community Service Agency to speak about the point-in-time count. I also invited Raul Dominguez from St. Louis County Probation to speak about the care team. And I'll end the presentation with some specific examples of how the homeless issues are affecting Series. So, Lenell?
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Lenell Fuller, the HMIS Homeless Management Information Systems Administrator here for St. Louis County. Alrighty. Okay, thank you very much. So, just want to briefly go over the process of how it all works to get the numbers for the entire community. Basically, it's a matter of both gathering all of those clients that are in shelters as well as those that are out on the streets. With that process, we also gather the information for the housing inventory count. So, we report both bed, bed availability, and those that are actually in those beds when we report to the government in regards to this. The other piece of that collection, once regardless of if they enter the data into the homeless management information systems, everybody in shelters and on the street, they go through the surveys, and then that data is all collected through. We've been using the last couple of years, the app, this app. And once that pieces is gathered, we then start the process of going through some, sometimes out on the streets, or even in some of the shelters, they have several project types. They may not, the individual that's actually gathering the data may not know if they're in an emergency shelter or transitional housing-type project. So, we go through and scrub all of that data to ensure that they're in the right project type. We look for duplicated entries. Perhaps someone was at the shelter in the morning, and they may have moseyed out on the streets later. So, we're verifying that they're not duplicated in those counts. There are those that may be couch surfing, not actually classified as homeless in the HUD world. And so, those are then not counted when we actually send the numbers in. Once everything's gathered, been verified, we then report them through the data exchange for HUD. So, basically, this year, there were a total of 2,091 individuals with 1,790 families. We interviewed, excuse me, we interviewed 1,760, so 84% of those were actually interviewed, and 16%, 331 were actually observed. That, that may include those that they start to answer the questions, and then they may be done after, you know, just answering a few questions they don't want to answer anymore. So, there's a process in place to actually still collect that data from observation of those that are doing the count. So, we collected 2,401 surveys. And out of those, 78 were not in a homeless situation. So, those weren't counted. And then 232 were actually archived. They may have been put in the wrong project type. They may have already been counted. So, there's numerous reasons as to why those individuals aren't counted in the actual count. We trained this year 302 volunteers to assist with the count. We had 76% participation with those volunteers, which was pretty good this year. And in Series, there were a total of 14 volunteers that went out and helped with the count. It was brought up in regards to those that actually had Spanish surveys that were done throughout the community, and there were 42. We had 68 actual Spanish-speaking individuals. And actually, one survey did come through in Spanish here in Series. I'm sure most of you already have seen the actual numbers that went out to the community, at least I'm hoping that you did. But, so I'm not going to go over all the specifics in regards to this. This has all the breakdowns from the mental health, all the breakdowns of those from the youth veterans and those types of numbers. And then what I did is kind of break down from the trend of Series over the last several years. Now, in 2021, with COVID, we had a, an exception that we requested through HUD due to COVID and going out and doing the count. Public health didn't advise it, so we used the coordinated entry system through the HMIS to get those numbers. So, there was no way to actually break down by communities for those. So, that's why you'll see kind of the mall in the 20s. We collected 17 surveys here for Series, and all of them were able to be. And then this basically is our final that is submitted to HUD, which shows we had 88% utilization of beds here in our community on the night of the count. And we recently found out it takes quite some time to get the results. We recently found out that both our housing inventory count and our point-in-time count data was approved and accepted through HUD. So, that was kind of a good thing for our community. Are there any specific questions in regards to numbers that you've seen or you have in regards to the count?
Bring this back to the council for some questions. I see that a button has been pressed. Councilmember Rosa? Laura, is yours?
Thank you. I know you had mentioned those that are couch surfing are not considered in the count. Does that include those that are sleeping in their vehicle?
No, actually, sleeping in the vehicle is considered place not meant for human habitation, and they are included. Unless, there's a little caveat to that. If they're in an RV, if they're able to hook up, you know, if they're able to hook up to electricity, that sort of thing, then, then they're not included. But we didn't have any of those this year. There were several as far as place not meant for human habitation, living in their car.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry. What was that? You kind of broke up.
What's the difference between the HMIS unhoused and the pit count?
HMIS, I'm sorry, I don't think I.
The numbers that you have in HMIS, I believe they differ than the pit count, and I was just wondering what the difference was.
Yes. So, obviously, the point-in-time count had those shelters, which they could or could not be entering the data into the system. And then you have those that are, you know, maybe out on the street that haven't received any services as to them being into HMIS. And so, the numbers can somewhat vary slightly. So, that's why it's always encouraged to try to get all of these projects regardless of the funding source to enter their data into the HMIS.
And then I think when I read the account, there was a, it looks like there was a significant amount of beds that were available. But what I'm hearing is that a lot of times, we're having encampments because there's not beds available. So, I'm a little confused as to why it's saying that only we're at 88% capacity, when I'm hearing that we don't have anywhere for our unsheltered to sleep.
Correct. So, there's, once again, it, it goes off of who's actually entering their data into, you know, into the system. The shelters were pretty full on the night of the count. This includes everything in, including your bike vouchers, your HUD VASH vouchers, those types of things. They're considered a bed, but necess, they may not necessarily actually, individual who has a voucher doesn't mean they have keys in their house. So, that percentage includes those types of projects when you're looking at numbers for the capacity.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any else?
You are, is that the only presentation you're doing? You're doing the next one? Is there, I just want to make sure, is there any members of the public that have any specific questions in regards to her presentation? Seeing none. And no hands been raised. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lenell. That was way over my head. Next will be Raul, probation. He's in charge of the care team. And we've worked very closely with them. They've been doing an amazing job.
Good afternoon. My name is Raul Dominguez. I'm a managing probation officer at the St. Louis County Probation Department and the manager over our county's community assessment, response, and engagement team, which is the care team. Today, I'm just going to give you guys a quick overview of what the team does, some stats that we've selected for the city of Series, and answer any questions if there's any. Just keep scrolling down. The next page is the presentation. Thank you. So, the, the care team is divided into two teams. We call it Care 1.0, Care 2.0. The Care 1.0 team is our outreach and engagement team. So, their main goal is to connect with homeless population in the community, try to buy, build rapport, try to get buy-in so that they can engage into services that we have to provide. So, on our 1.0 team, we have case managers, I mean, our behavioral health specialists who assist with some kind of first steps into case management and linkage. And then we have mental health clinicians who can assist with someone who is in crisis and conducts 5150s. And also, like assessments to get them into full-service partnerships through behavioral health and recovery services. So, one of the main goals of the team is to find what is the barrier, or what is keeping someone homeless? And try to address those barriers in order to get them into housing, or get them into a shelter, or get them to just help them into the recovery. So, what we do is respond to crisis situations. One thing that's unique about the team is we provide the services out in the community in field. So, if we go out into the park, this is, I believe we call it Independence Park here in Series. We're out there with the, with someone, someone that day says like, you know what, I'm having some issues. I'm hearing voices. I'm, I have these hallucinations. I have a mental health crisis. Our team right there will pull up a chair, phone to the side, and conduct the mental health assessment there. It's about providing immediate services to want to engage in the service. So, one of the things is we have also somebody there from community service agency who can help people with any type of cal fresh or medical issues that they have, can give them their benefits. Additionally, we have a public health nurse who can help people into treatment, help them get into some type of medical treatment, also be an advocate for them once they receive services from primary care physician. Additionally, we have a substance use disorder counselor on the team who can conduct assessments for people who want to get into treatment, substance use treatment, and also that we facilitate their entry into treatment program. So, that's kind of what the 1.0 team does. What the 2.0 team does is the case management part, which is the, we conduct, we we help them with an individual, individualized case plan to help their individual needs. And at that point, the case manager helps them achieve those goals of the case plan. So, whether it's getting them the birth certificate, getting them their social security card, helping them with job applications, housing applications, that is the job of the case manager. Also, getting them to the appointments, to and from appointments, to make sure that they're following up with the treatment that they need. So, some of these kind of bleed into each other, but the train, what the idea, the idea of the team to kind of work cohesively to help people out of homelessness or out of any type of issue that they're having in the community. So, how does the care team receive referrals? The care team receives referrals through local law enforcement. So, what we look for is those individuals that are receiving the highest calls for service, the highest number of arrests, spending the most time in jail, experiencing several instances, instances of distress. That means that's the person that you're unfortunately receiving phone calls saying like, you know, man out in front of, you know, Popeyes, and he's out there and he's walking around, taking his shirt off, and he's talking to the air, you know. We're trying to, we're trying to engage those people who usually do not accept services willingly and are a little bit harder to reach. Those are the ones that are referred to us. We work closely with Lieutenant Johnson and his team in code enforcement to identify those individuals and then to go out there and try to provide service, services, try to get them linked to the services that they need. So, here are some stats for the care team. We started in January. We're now here to, to Series. So, the first month, we contacted seven individuals. Then we contacted one. You can see the numbers kind of fluctuate. So, sometimes the question is, well, as we go out there, why are the numbers fluctuating? So, recently in June, we had 50 individuals. What happens is when we first start going out, a lot of times, building that rapport. So, we're not, we don't know also the first few months where people are. As we work with the team, we work with the police department, we start identifying where people are located, and then we're able to engage them in those places. Another thing that happens is, at first, we have some individuals we're working through, we don't really know who they are. So, today, someone can tell me they're Mike, right, and they have maybe a shaved head, and then we contact them a month later. They tell me they're John, and now they have a different beard and a full set of hair, you know. So, those type of things, we try to work through and identifying the individuals that we're working with. So, as we get more familiar with the community that we're serving, we're able to provide more accurate numbers, people that we're serving. And as you can see, some of our, the most, biggest services that we provide are substance use disorder and medical services. We have quite a few people who will ask us for assessments or help with treating their substance use disorder and also with medical. Any questions?
Councilmember Rosalindaviera, or is yours?
Is there more? Or should I jump in now?
Oh, this is.
Okay.
Yes.
I have, I know some of you answered for me at the S H A meeting. So, what I want to confirm is, from my understanding from the S H A meeting, you guys are through state public safety funds? So, are we able, in the event that we, if the, because I see your numbers are increasing, almost double, it looks like, each month recently. If they get to a point, are we able to increase services since it is through state public safety funds?
The CCP? Yes, that's correct. The CCP is the Community Corrections Partnership, which is, head of the CCP is the chief probation officer, but it's a board. And on that board, different law enforcement agencies can bring up proposals for added funds.
And that is something that our city can handle. I'm assuming probably TJ, since he kind of oversees our code enforcement, or would that go through our city manager?
I would.
Between the two of them, they'll figure it out?
Yeah, we could figure that out.
Hey, I just go with it, right? I guess the next one is, I know you had mentioned at the S H A meeting, and I, you didn't mention it in this presentation. How many times does it usually take before someone actually is willing to take the next step or willing to accept services or any kind of help through you?
Well, we start off with a release of information form, and it takes about seven to 10 contacts before they even engage us and are working with us. That means we have to see them individually seven to 10 times before they'll give us their name, sign the paperwork for us to start working with them. And from there, it grows. So, I think we went into maybe like an additional 20 to 30 contacts for them to complete a VISPDA, which is what helps them get into housing, then there are another 20 to 30 additional contacts for them to really take on the mental health assessment and get them treatment that they need. So, it's, every step of the way is by an additional 20. I don't have the exact numbers, but that's what it kind of equals.
So, if you're coming out weekly, ultimately, I believe it said 40. I have the presentation here. That's almost a full year before they're willing to accept and even do the form to get into HMIS, if I understand that correctly.
So, if we're, we're starting to see a lot of the same people as we come out. So, one thing is, we come out every Wednesday. We come out, we meet with TJ's team, and we kind of identify the people that we're going to see. However, we know one day is not enough. So, we have also a case manager that's just dedicated to the city of Series. So, that person will come out on a Tuesday, Thursday, on a Monday, to come out and see the clients that they have under their care. So, at the same time, even though we're out here as a team, maybe one, one day, that's not the ser, that's just not one day of services. I mean, we're out here multiple days. That person will bring out another team member. If they can't do something and the team has someone, it's all the way. So, it's really a team effort. That's kind of what I'm saying. We have a 1.0 team and a 2.0 team, but they work really close together, make sure we meet the need.
I'm sorry, I have a few. Now, are you finding a lot of people are here and just saying, hey, I just need a ride to the shelter in Modesto, or I need a ride to Torlock or anything like that? Are they more kind of here every week and they're not going anywhere?
Fortunately, a lot of people do not take the shelter. You know, they do not want to take help or don't want to go into a shelter. So, a lot of them, if they're dealing with, because if they're dealing with substance use disorder, they can't use it, they can't use one in the shelter, right? They don't want to live their lifestyle, so because they, that's not allowed, they'd rather not take the service. The idea with the team, and this is what I've kind of talked about a little bit, is for us to be there when, you know, that fifteenth time is that they get it, that somebody contacts them, and then finally, that day, they're there to change their life. I explained to people, some people who ask me, what, what's works? What's the best way for it to work? I tell them, there's no formula to helping people out of mathematical equation. Everybody is ready at a different time. What we try to do is have as many contacts, contacts as we can for us to be there that time that they want to really accept service. Help them out of the issue.
Thank you. One last thing, and I don't know if it's for you or TJ. So, if we do encounter, which I've encountered, them, issues with the unhoused, do we contact care directly? Or do we contact our code enforcement, TJ?
Depends on what you mean by contacting all the police. You can definitely let code enforcement know that they could handle, depends on what kind of.
Thank you.
And that's kind of, I agree with TJ. It depends on what's happening. So, if someone is in distress, probably the best thing to call law enforcement and then assess the situation. Their team. So, we're one phone call away. Be like, hey, I know you get that contact.
And so, for example, we have one, or we did have one that was like arguing with the telephone pole. Is that more of like a TJ kind of thing? Or that a care team, because it's obviously a mental health or other issue?
But with that, I could, I would call the, the non-burden seal. At the care team.
Okay. And then same with those that may have soiled themselves? I guess is a good way of putting it, when you see it through their clothes? Because they're obviously not going to be able to ride public transportation to a shower, to the shelter they're soiled.
I would start with not a murder.
With pretty much everything. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Since January, since the care team has been working with us, in your personal opinion, have you met the goals that you're, that you are trying to achieve? And obviously, it looks like there's different categories here when it comes to services. For example, the housing portion of it. It only seems like effectively, there's only been three people, that four people total that have been housed since you've been here. So, and, and just kind of educate me is, so my question is basically, do you feel when it comes to housing, if it actually has been effective at all?
As far as housing, it's very difficult to have anyone housed. As now mentioned earlier, we have people who may have a housing voucher. They still cannot afford housing with that housing voucher. Because even though you have a housing voucher, you still have to find the house or somebody that's going to rent you the housing voucher. Well, it's very difficult. Housing is very difficult for a community to find people, places to stay. What we try to do sometime is link them back to family. One of our, some of our biggest successes is once someone gets their life back on track, right, they stop using drugs, or they get their mental health situation, medical situation. Well, if we can link them back to family members, that's one of our biggest success, because that sometimes is keeping them from being. When a lot of communities, what we see, it's people from maybe the city of Series, once lived in the city of Series, have family here in the city of Series and became homeless. They don't want to leave, because this is where they feel their community does, try to get them back into other family members, if we can. And if not, then we try to find others, other issues, situations for them. We try to combine sometimes incomes. So, if we have, say, two people who thousand dollars in this, by social security benefits a month, and we find a third, maybe we can help them get an apartment or housing together. Our part is, a lot of people who've been on the streets for a while have not built those, have lost some of the skills that sometimes we just obviously take for granted, but that are innate in us. In your house, education, things like that. So, there's some of the issues that we. That's why with the team, our main goals are to reduce the number of calls for service, law enforcement. So, for TJ and his team, try to reduce those calls for service that are somebody who out in the community. So for TJ and his team, try to reduce those calls for service that are somebody who out in the community in distress. So if the guy that was talking to the telephone, he referred to us, we can work with them. Maybe we can't get them housed, but maybe we can get them the right medical attention and a health attention so that we get less, less of those instances out in the community. And law enforcement can work on other issues they may have instead of dealing with, if we don't write the level, high level.
So have you, have you noticed if it's been a, an rise in substance of use and mental health issues here in our community? When making contact?
So our, our uh, our main issue that we come across is substance use. Us people who are using, using, one of the things we do is also we give. Just about every encampment. Try to do public health nurses, if you can, test overdose. Tell you most of our homeless people that we have in the community.
And that was all. Um, next person, Danny Martinez?
Thank you, sir. So this uh, the six month snippet of data, uh very tiny, would you say that these numbers are pretty consistent? That four people and a hundred and fifty people you've contacted were seeking home or help with assistance with homes? The one in thirty, that's, that's pretty consistent, that data? So it's more of a substance issues, are you saying?
I, from what I've seen, yeah, uh most of our successes come with when we can get someone into substance use disorder council. Uh, we have story, I didn't bring it, but it's called Brad's Story on the Police Department uh YouTube channel. He had someone who was homeless for about two and a half years, was from out of the area and ended up in Modesto. That person, the first step was uh control their stuff. That's what I'm. A lot of times, our first steps.
Thank you, sir.
Rosalinda?
Is there anything that we can do here in series that would help you? Or I don't know if that leads into TJ.
I think we're working really well together, our partnership is great, uh really appreciate TJ and his team. Uh, one of the things that we try to do also with our team is not just give people handouts, giving somebody a handout. Not about that, but with it too is work with the team to uh say like, when is enough enough, right? Someone's not taking advantage of. Really not going to want, talk to TJ and his team and. Try to be there for both of them, like, I'm going to take service. We have a probation officer who worked also with uh your team member or our CARE team uh clients. And if we've been there a few times, the judge will act like they're working with CARE, they know they're. Try to work with that also, that's part of the teamwork.
Thank you.
All right, I have more of a recommendation, it's just a thought. We do have an app in for code enforcement, and as I was looking in the app, uh there was no actual line item that would, would, that said CARE's team. Maybe it might be an option, city managers to look into that, maybe give the public an opportunity to report anything that, that could go directly to you. And that way, we can cut out the middleman, so you know, to make that decision, we can provide some information and probably help out your team as well. I don't, does anybody else on the council have any other additional questions or comments? Does anybody from the public have any questions and comments, sir? Please step up to the podium and state your name, sir.
In Yankley Series, I want to thank these gentlemen here for the program they have for series and the county. People don't realize, because they don't come to these things, that, that there's help out there for just about everything we got a problem with. In California, I think we got more problems than anybody else. It's just a shame that some people can't see that or mentally they can't grab a hold of. My question is, is with all the statistics there, the numbers, uh how successful is this program? And then the, um, do they have uh an area where they try to provide work skills after to get to a certain level? And uh knowing that the number of people, how successful has this program been up to this time? You know, I mean, maybe a percentage, how many people really get out there and succeed? I mean, do they fall back all the time or are we just constantly paying through these programs to fix their so-called problems that never get? They probably don't want them to be uh fixed, but is there a success rate out there? That's what I'd like to know.
I can answer this question. Uh, CARE team is a piece of the puzzle that serious has been missing and code enforcement, police department cannot provide it. But I'll tell you that just one homeless person that receives a housing is a win. I'll give you an example, there's a lady at Smarter Park. She would uh not sleep in the park, but she'd spread her stuff all over the tables in the cupboard area. At night, she would take it all, pack it up, walk it across the street, sidewalk. She was able to get services through the CARE team. I can tell you that one person that is not spreading her stuff all over the uh cupboard area, that's a win for us. So yes, it's very, uh, it's very successful. As far as support program after, I will maybe can talk.
A lot of it depends on the clients, so if we're receiving some people that we get onto the CARE team. Remember, the CARE team, the people that are referred to CARE are the ones that usually have been homeless for quite a few years. That they um have not been taking on services when they've been provided to them. That's kind of why we're stepping in really intensive uh case management and certain, providing them with a lot of contacts. So some of those people, or many of them are either uh disabled or have a met or mentally ill to the capacity that they may not be able to. But if they are, we can work together with county's workforce development program, try to teach them job skills, to get them job skills. Uh, we have one person on the CARE team, uh which will, that story here probably is pretty soon. Social media channel, but she's working at the, he went from two, three years being in an encampment. Not wanting to get services, had relationships that we were able to step in, help her out. Now she's housed and giving those services, but also is gaining. Well, everyone's different, but I think when we talk about successes, we also want to be able to measure those. So one of the things, we have a data analyst on our team, try to collect about a year's worth of data. Which people are being successful and which ones are not. But that's why when we talk about calls for service, we work with police departments to give us how many calls for service they had for this individual, maybe past six months to a year. We can reduce that, that's also a win for the police department. We can reduce number of days that they're in jail, number of arrests that they've had, number of fifty-one fifties or uh moments of distress that they're having in a community. Those for us are successful.
Hey, I'll try to wrap this up uh quickly here. So as we talked about, we've been partnering with CARE for about, I think, six months now. Uh, the process goes, that our code enforcement goes out and contacts uh people daily. We have a list in our office, CARE does have access to our office. Uh, we have affectionately called them Care Bears. Hurts, uh, we make a list all, all week. And uh when they come into the office, they get the list. Uh, sometimes we're just describing somebody where they're at and that they go out and find them. So some of the specific issues code enforcement uh has, dealing with homeless is the encampments. I'll give you a couple uh specific examples, one is the old Kmart building. We had to go behind there, we cleaned it up for the, for the business.
Christina, would you like to move to the next slide for him?
We uh uh had to clean up everything back there, there's tons, literal tons of garbage. We had to cut the uh trees back, they were building encampments, they were cutting holes through the fence. Uh, we gave the property owner a one-time cleanup, told them from there on, they needed to fix the issues and they did. Very well with us, they put up a permanent fencing back there, so only we have access to it and it's. Some pictures from behind the old Kmart building. We also did that with Walmart, gold, building, same thing. Uh, we've had a very good response from property owners. I would like to talk about one property on Moore Road that we recently went to. Uh, it had several R P's, a motorhome, uh actual encampments off this uh private property. People actually got a lock and a uh chain that locked the property owners out, let them on their own property. So we uh recently acquired this property, uh used to be county, so the property owner still go into the sheriff's department to get help. And they sent him, meantime, our code enforcement went out, they had to call the patrol officers out there. Again, we got on the property. Tons, literal tons of garbage that we cleaned up, stolen vehicles. And we had to call Burt Lottie to come in and actually help clean the property. And we now have the lock to the gate and property owners, they made great efforts to keep it clean. We'll save the shopping carts for another time. Uh, that's all I have, thank you, and happy to answer any.
I have more than just a, not a question, but more of a comment. I, I think that code enforcement has really done a great job. And just by looking at these pictures, I really do really appreciate it. Uh, there is, there's a lot of things that are happening in the city of series. And when we see positive things like this in your team, it really uh makes me realize that uh everyone on this council made that decision to support code enforcement. Made, made, made the right choice, so thank you. I have a councilmember Rosalinda and Mr. Casey, I believe you were first, sir. There you go. You're up. You have the floor.
I, I think we're, we're improving greatly. My question is about the shopping carts, we pick them up, we take them to this yard, then we take them back? But why don't we take them to the property owner when we get them?
So we have what we call the cart route, that's over of uh, it's our old street alley. What happens is we have code enforcement that go at all over the city, picking up different shopping carts and then having to return them to different businesses, which takes up a lot of time. This way, we can collect all carts, put them in one location and business owners can come get them. So part of the problem was, we would go pick them up, drop them off, reservice, and it takes up a lot of our time and it was unnoticed by the business owners. So business owners do have a company they contract with and they can come pick them up, if they have a, the combination to the gate.
Councilmember, you're up, Rosalinda?
All right. Um, I guess my next question is, it's looked like based on your report that there's a variety of resources, or I guess are already taking place in the city? Is it possible that we can coordinate some of these efforts, maybe have the churches and the nonprofits and public safety all come together and meet? So we can actually know who's doing what on which day and kind of better coordinate these services? Because I just found out we had the shower last Thursday by accident. And then it sounds like we have more than just one church that's offering food. Um, so I'm just wondering if we can maybe may have a meeting to kind of coordinate these efforts?
I think that's a great idea. We'll probably have to block after the meeting, there's a lot of services that I'm not.
And then I guess next thing, and I know you weren't at the last um S H A meeting. Um, they did a presentation regarding the downtown streets team, which looks like it was funded through federal and state housing. And even in Modesto, they picked up almost fifty-three thousand pounds of trash last month in July alone. I'm wondering, and they actually got, it looks like people into housing last year, is that something that would be feasible or a way we can maybe look into bringing something like that into town since it's being grant through state and federal funding?
Sounds great to me, I, I heard of that, but we can definitely look at.
Ones behind, probably have heard.
Probably.
So, okay, I think that was kind of my, because it looked like they were, they were having some success in Modesto with the downtown street team, which is actually in several cities throughout the state. And they also do case management, helping them work in the community, picking up trash and stuff. Or um volunteering in exchange for like a gift card to Walmart. Um, and they're getting them back on track while still helping the city. Okay, is there any other services or anything that you think that would be beneficial in addressing this issue and also helping your job and life a little more?
Well, as we continue, I didn't know about the CARE team until somebody introduced me to them. And we made a huge effort to get them into our community. Uh, we got them access to our building so they can get up there. We've tried to make series for, for uh away from home. And as new uh programs available, as soon as I find out about it, we can vet it, works for us, then great. Right now, I don't know if it's, or that.
Good, councilmember.
Thank you, TJ.
Councilmember Martinez, floor is yours.
Thank you, Lieutenant, I, I don't have a question for you, I just wanted to piggyback off what the mayor said and thank you and your team for what you guys have done cleaning up the community. I know some of your code enforcement officers have competition to see who can pick up the most trash and clean the most areas. So I appreciate the work you're doing, it's noticeable and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. We have a dream team of code enforcement, we'll probably never have it again. Um, and also with Tony, she's part of the team and Al Burkett from Streets, it's uh literally the dream team. So uh with your support, it just motivates them up more, so thank you.
Thank you, I think we're good. Next presentation?
We have a, have a hand raised.
Do we have a hand raised? Okay. Angela? Welcome, Angela.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, good evening. Um, I just uh heard that there's a dream team in series. Um, I'd like to see, um, so my name's Angela Huerta. Um, I live in series. Uh, I also do uh not, I have a nonprofit, St. Vincent de Paul Ministries, and we serve uh Modesto area. Um, and members of the church who live in other areas. Um, I do outreach, uh we do come to city of series, I actually live in series. And so it's good to hear that there is a good team. Um, you know, with outreach and um with light, I'd like to see, um, it is a good idea for us to get together in the city of series and see who's doing what, what days, uh for exchange phone numbers and emails. Um, there is a community liaison meeting that happens once a month. I'm not too sure if anybody from series is on there, but we'd like to have you also join so that you can get a greater um idea of how many services are out here in, in our county. Um, and I'm also affiliated with SHARE, uh Status Lost Homeless Resource Advocate Enterprise. Uh, they also help out with the homeless in our community in lots of ways. Um, so we're glad to hear that there's um homelessness being uh recognized in series. And um we're glad to be a part of the team. And thank you guys for um talking about it tonight.
Thank you, Angela, if you need us to connect you with anyone, we, we can reach out to the city clerk and we can go from there.
Okay, um, I'm very interested on, you know, I know there's different cities in the county and some do other things. You know, everybody does their, theirs, they're way different. Um, I keep pushing for medicated assisted treatment, um that it needs to be an outreach. We need to have an outreach team that can help get to people on the streets, because not everybody gets to get the services uh that they need. So um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Angela. Appreciate your comments. Is that it?
Yes.
We're good. Well, not, not from Angela, no, not you, I was talking to the city clerk, I'm sorry. Moving on to our next report for the International Council of Shopping Centers, I C S C Annual Conference. This report will be done by Christopher Home.
Good evening, Council, I'd like to report on the I C S C, uh which stands for the International Council of Shopping Centers. They have a annual convention. They have a annual convention in Las Vegas. This year we have two members of staff and two members of the council attend. The preparation that was, uh, put in place prior to going to. Uh, let me talk about the convention. It's a gathering of several thousand people, including, um, people from cities, local governments. Retail brokers, people that represent, uh, development companies for. And some nonprofits and mostly businesses. Um, so they get together and they network and we're, um, so the preparation that we did was to put together some maps, some data that we could share. Some sites in the city of series that we could talk to brokers about and invite them and encourage them to locate their businesses that they represent in series. So we, we have a list of, um, businesses that we contacted. We had, uh, the, the event is, um, it's Sunday to Tuesday. And it's really a day and a half. Working, uh, we got there Sunday. And, uh, we have beyond the, the five appointments that we had, um, twenty companies that we thought that would be a match for series. Of course, we met a lot more people than that. Um, during our time, we split up into pairs. Apart from the times that we had our appointments, uh, we traveled through this convention center, which is very large. And people gave, gave them our business cards. Uh, and what we learned was that this international, international convention had a lot of people um, that were not California focused. Um, there are a lot of people, um, from United States. Wasn't a lot of focus on California. So, um, some of the time was spent just finding people that were interested and that would make a match with us. And so for that reason, we're thinking, um, it may be more efficient, um, forward next year to have, um, economic development manager just attend the ICSC convention in Monterey, which is a regional one that's much more California focused. Uh, we think we'll get more. And, uh, so we, the follow-up that we've been doing, um, we have few businesses in particular that we're, um, focused on. It's target. We've had multiple meetings with them. This is, this is a process that takes, uh, some time to build relationships. Um, we, we've, uh, hotel company that's interested in coming to series. That may take, uh, a year. Um, but again, this is the process that we're building, uh, we're finding sites. Uh, we're working with property owners because the city doesn't know property that we convert into state. We have to basically play a matchmaker role between our local, uh, property owners and citizens, see what kind of deals. Um, so again, we've done a lot of follow-up with emails, uh, calls and meetings, uh, with a lot of these people. Some other ones that we were focusing on. For Walgreens, um, we're looking at an indoor recreation facility, um, hybrid, um, theater dinner. Sort of business. Um, but that, that's just kind of the tip. So those, those are the, those are the ones that we met with. Um, the meetings that were the appointments that we had, uh, range from twenty to forty minutes. Um, it's a very fast-paced environment. We're, um, looking forward to, um, our economic development manager, Tamara, going to Monterey, uh, next year. Setting up meetings ahead of time. It will be even more efficient, uh, learning from our experience, uh, having gone to the one in, um, this year. So this is a, this is a long process of building relationships, um, meeting people and connecting with them, staying in touch with them over, over time, because, um, if the market isn't perfect for a certain business right now, as long as we are continually, uh, coming back to them, then they'll remember us and they'll say, you know what, series is a place that I'm interested in, know this person and squeaky wheel gets the oil. Our strategy. You have any questions? Happy to answer them.
Bring us back to council for any questions. Is there comments? You have a question and a comment? Council member Rosalinda Viera, you have the floor.
Um, I know we have a, a contract, I believe, with an agency to help with some of this bringing in the businesses. I was just wondering how that played in here because I went last year and I think they only made two appointments for us. And so a lot of it we end up having to do ourselves. So I was just wondering, are they going to be more proactive? Are they more of a reactive type consultant?
We actually decided that we weren't satisfied with their services. So we've stopped using that contract expired. Decided not to renew. So we're, we're looking and, uh, we're keeping our options open. Do feel confident that staff will be able to, uh, manage the event next year in Monterey.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that that was probably a good decision to not extend the contract. Especially when you have, uh, the mayor and the council member see firsthand how effective they weren't. Um, I think that you guys were very effective. This was a great experience for me and the council member. And with all the connections that you have made at that conference, we'll continue the exponential growth in the city of series for years to come. So I thank both of you and thank you very much. And you go to Monterey. You know, obviously it's all business, so make sure that you, your due diligence and, uh, put a smile on your face and tell them that, uh, series is open for business. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Moving on to citizens communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meeting, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes, resolution number two thousand and seven one oh six for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address city council on any agenda item such as the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside of the chamber doors. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment? Public period is now open.
Uh, Dave Prada, series. Last Tuesday, last Tuesday, the Mezgerel Oversight Committee had their first in-house meeting. And Mayor Lopez, uh, attended a meeting. And I'd like, uh, since, since the COVID, uh, because it does injustice doing online thing, that you get more information when you have everybody sitting in a table and discussing stuff. A lot of the town, towns say they, they've been posting signs and, and there, some of their projects that they're using Mezgerel, so the community see where that money's going. One of the other things was brought up was, was that, um, maybe the local papers can also post some of the, what's going on in the community that's using Mezgerel funds. The other thing I, I brought up with the planning commission, I talked to a few. The rains that we got were unkind. If, yes, it filled the lakes. Yes, it flushed the rivers down. Yes, the farmers and ranchers got more water. But it also destroyed property and, and crops. And it's also, um, bringing in, bringing a blight of, uh, oxtails. Oxtails is a weed that invasive. And once it gets hold, it, it, it takes over and it's killing the lawns. I know of some of, some of the houses I've seen, they haven't mowed in months and some of the, basically you see these normally in fields and along the roadways and highways. They're taking, uh, and not only that, they're taking over like the dog park and meal park. I don't know about the other, the other parks. Uh, because I don't know, normally attend those. One thing, and even my yard, um, uh, it, once it takes hold, it's hard, I'm trying to, trying to stop it, stop it before it kills the whole lawn. And I'm afraid by next July, uh, fire departments not only going to be fighting, fighting house fires because of illegal fireworks, but they're going to be fighting a lot of lawn yards. There will be more targets than, than the homes. That, I don't know what, what we're going to do, but I know a couple, um, they're checking in on what they can do by, by getting rid of the bit of the foxtails, but once it, once it kills the lawns, it, it it's going to be, um, we'll have to see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. City manager, is anything that you could possibly look into for these foxtails around our city parks?
I talked to Mr. Pratt earlier about some of the stuff we're going to be doing and share some of our ideas. Parking some of the parks and stuff that he was talking about regarding.
Thank you. Thank you, Pratt, for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Welcome.
John Warren, City of Series. A little while ago, we were having a discussion and presentation from the care team. And public invited to make comments, but only Mr. Yegly was allowed to speak. Council cut everyone else off that wanted to, uh, make a comment or ask a question and went on to the code enforcement portion of the. And council was allowed to ask code enforcement questions. The general public was not allowed to have, uh, any questions.
Mr. Warren, did you have your hand up? And I apologize if you did. Uh, he is back now and you're more than welcome to ask questions, sir.
We'll, we'll pass that and we're on with the agenda. Comments and stuff probably wouldn't have made. End.
Well, my apologies, just, just for the record.
The problem is, is that council does not always recognize everybody in the public when they're standing or waving their hands in the air. That's happened to Mr. Yegly in the past and it's happened to me in the past. Well, please be aware and maybe, maybe take a little bit of extra time. We do have that. I would also ask that something be done with the P A system in this room. Money has been thrown at it, still does not function properly. It's hard to hear council people at the bench or at the classes speaking. Sometimes they turn their head away or whatever and the microphone doesn't pick anything up. Or they have their hand over their face or whatever, like I tend to do sometimes. But please, with the squealing and the squelching, I don't care what it takes. Money was supposed to have been spent to repair the audio in this room and it hasn't been successful. Thank you very much.
Mr. Warren, I will say once again, my apologies if anybody felt that they were not being heard. Um, I will ask twice this time around. Um, I gave you an opportunity to ask your questions, sir, if you want to, he's here. If you don't want to ask him any questions, you're more than welcome to talk to him on the side. So once again, my sincere apologies to anyone who I did not see their hands raised. Um, anybody else?
Genius series. Today I was in the community center here quite often. I should get a part-time job. And I noticed in the big room over there, we call it the big room, some people probably call it auditorium. Uh, and I asked what was going on there and it was something to do with active shooters. I don't know if that was part of the, the city. I kind of thought maybe it had something to do with some city. There was a lot of ladies and gentlemen in there. And I brought this up to the city council before that would like to see some more input to the city. I don't know if you have to use ARPA funds for these programs to pay somebody to come to speak or whatever, uh, and a senior citizen, but I'd like to see the whole city have the advantage to come at least one time. Maybe there's a process where they could sign up, you know, so you know how many people are wanting to attend or what. And learn about active shooters. I mean, this is all over. All we have to do is watch television all the time. Now what to do, where to go, you know, but how we should react each time, something like that, if it does come in front of us. And at the same time, we put some money that the city has into, to teaching people stuff around here. You know, nobody, I brought this up for years, nobody, uh, one city council has addressed the people in the city or their needs to learn, to learn what we should do to live in a city amongst one another. The laws, codes, what you can do, what you can't do. I'm sure people have questions and instead ask questions. Maybe somebody just tells these people, just go ahead, do it and then have the consequences later. And then you have code enforcement come to someone's house and try to explain it to them. And, uh, give them citations or not citation warnings several times before they get to citation. And that probably didn't go down the tubes for a long time and doesn't get paid, but we need more education for the community and we've never gotten that. All it takes is to put something out there, see who wants to attend. And, you know, we need to learn how to protect ourselves in our city. There's a lot of crime. I'm sure the the chief here can tell you what goes on in a weekly and monthly daily basis. And it's around us. I hope none of us in here are victims of anything, but if we can figure out what to do in a situation and, you know, could save one of our lives. And educating people in the city of how to live here, how to do things in the community on the street, whether, whether it's garbage, you know, questions about the water, you know, anything, you know, how many stories can I put in my house before they get noticed? Uh, education, that's, that's knowledge for everybody. And I would love everybody in the city to get some kind of education so we can live together in a cohesive community. Get along instead of, and I don't like all these things to go on. Code enforcement, we shouldn't have a code enforcement. People should have enough common sense to know what's right and what's wrong. But they don't and that's why we have code enforcement in cities. So education, the community and, uh, and law enforcement, some kind of program where people can sign up and sign up for the other issues too about learning about living in the community. See who turns up. I think we need something like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to make a comment? Anybody, any with, anyone with their hands raised on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Have we received any emails, phone calls?
We have not.
Okay. We now close public period. Thank you. Moving on to appointment boards and commissions, item number C, appointments to the Tuolumne River Regional Park Citizens Advisory Committee. Allen, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This item is being, being brought to you as a result of the June twelfth meeting. Um, staff received an application from Mr. Alvaro Zuniga Franco on February twenty-first. Staff brought the, um, application before council to consider, um, Mr. Franco for appointment to the Tuolumne River Regional Park Citizens Advisory Committee. At that time, council, uh, directed staff to enhance advertisement for the, um, vacancy. Um, in an attempt to obtain additional applications. Over the past sixty days, the vacancy has been advertised, um, via social media platforms on the city's website as well as in the series career has been published twice. As a result, um, of the advertisement efforts, the city clerk's office did receive one application from a Mrs. Ashley Hargett on July thirteenth to serve on Tuolumne River Regional Park Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, the clerk's office also confirmed with Mr. Franco that, uh, he did want, he did request to withdraw his application. But this time I will turn it over to, uh, council to consider the application that was received by, um, Ms. Hargett.
Is she present or?
She was present at the beginning of the meeting. I looked out to the audience and I don't see her at this time. So perhaps she, she had to leave.
Okay. So I'll bring this to the council for appointment unless there's any questions or comments. No questions or comments. Is there any questions or comments from the public? Anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. I bring this back to the council to appoint. What was her name again? I'm sorry.
Hargett.
Miss, okay.
Ashley Hargett.
Hargett.
I don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly. It's in the staffer part how it's spelt.
I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint Ms. Ashley Hargett.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council member Casey. Council member Casey.
Yes.
Council member Vera.
Yeah.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Congratulations. Thank you. Moving on to item number D, appointing the Public Works Director. His or her doesn't, his or her doesn't need to the San Slaus County Local Task Force on Solid Waste Management and authorizing the city manager to submit a letter of designation to the San Slaus County Board of Supervisors. And this goes to Tony. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of background on the L T F, the local task force. Um, the State Solid Waste Management Act of 1989, uh, or Assembly Bill nine thirty-nine required, um, Santa Claus County demonstrate existing landfill capacity requirement for a minimum of fifteen years. Uh, so a citing element committee from the nine incorporated cities within Santa Claus County was, uh, formed. Essentially the, uh, L T F of the local task force. Uh, the local task force essentially now after the, excuse me. So the, since initially the task force put together the California, the county integrated waste management plan um, that, that addresses hazardous waste cycling and solid waste issues for the county and for the nine cities. Um, today, the, uh, that group, that group meets to do the review of every five years that, that plan, the California Integrated Waste Management Plan, they review every five years and submit it to CalRecycle. Um, essentially they serve as an advisory committee on solid waste issues throughout the county. Um, and things like Covanta, based energy plant and, um, landfill issues. So, um, if you have any questions on what the, that group does, happy to answer them. But as far as representation, it is a voting, it is a voted, excuse me, appointed position from the county. So with the letter of designation that's sent from the city manager to the county board of directors, they will approve that, that person as our member for the series.
Does the council have any questions? Any members of the public that have any questions? Anyone on Zoom?
There's no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. I bring this back to the council for motion.
Move to approve D under appointments of boards and commissions.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Aye.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to conflicts and inventions and declarations, anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict or an interest? Seeing none. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and enacted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone in the council that would like a consent item pool for further discussion? Council member Martinez.
Sorry about that. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen. Vice Mayor Bristlever.
Item number six, please.
Six. Any other council members that like to pull an item? Any of these members of the public that would like to pull an item? Seeing none. Any members of the public on Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom.
Bring this back to the council for motion.
Make a motion to approve consent counter items one through five, seven through twelve, uh, fourteen and fifteen.
Second.
Before, you said fourteen through seventeen, you meant to say, right? Fourteen through seventeen.
Sorry, fourteen through seventeen. I'm sorry.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Aye.
Council member Vera.
Aye.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number six, resolution number twenty, number twenty-two-three X X X, authorizing the purchase of police canine Fiona from Officer Kevin. One's for you.
Yes, I pulled this item, uh, to have a discussion about it and then move on. So we were fortunate enough to, to have a lateral police officer come from the city of Gustine that's fully trained canine officer and was able in a few months to slide into our canine program as our final canine officer. Along with that, he has Fiona, his wonderful canine partner that was fully trained and paid for by the city of Gustine. So in the contract that Mr. Rosin has with the city of Gustine, if the canine becomes a part of another agency, he, his contract says he's responsible to pay the city of, to basically reimburse the city of Gustine forty-five hundred dollars um, to pay for and cover, excuse me, to cover the training and all of the things that it took to get Fiona on the street. So since we are benefiting from Fiona and Mr. Rosin in our city and Fiona is a young canine that will be on the street for a long time. Um, I have, uh, I will make a motion after the comments are made. And my motion is going to be to cover the cost of that contract from the city of Series to the city of Gustine. So we should probably have some public comment, et cetera, first, before I make that motion.
I take this to this council for any questions or comments. Council member Pierre, the floor is yours.
Yes, my only question would be, uh, where would the funding come from?
General fund.
We have the funding in the general fund to cover that kind of expense. It's turned on. I, the mic is green. Um, so I guess my question is, do we have the cost in the general fund to cover this since I don't believe it was on the budget?
Yes, ma'am. Basically, we have some savings from animal control and we'll be transferring the forty-five hundred dollars over to the police department's, uh, equipment account. We already have a savings from that.
And the cost of a new dog is significantly more, correct?
They usually run for, well, around a thousand dollars. And that's not counting the training of the officer or the dog itself, the bonding part.
Thank you.
You said the funds are coming from where?
Coming from the savings from my animal control contract. Uh, we have a savings in there and so we'll move that money over to the, uh,
So that money will be moved, moved over to the general fund to cover this?
Yes, sir.
So in essence, there will, there will be no loss from the general fund?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Mr. Martinez, the floor is yours.
I, I just want to say that I also support the vice mayor's, uh, decision here that we're going to get a young dog. We're going to have that dog in our community for a long time and help protect and serve us. So having that officer pay for the dog when the city could cover it and then have the dog out there working for us is a great idea.
Mr. Casey.
Yeah.
The floor is yours, Council member Casey.
I'll turn it on. Can you hear me, John? Good. Yeah. My question is, do, do we bring this back in a, with different resolution? We, I mean, is it, we're changing the, the resolution. Do we, do we have to bring it back?
It'll be, I told you that there was going to be no questions for you today, but unfortunately, that was incorrect. But can, can we today, motion as Silveira is going to recommend and take care of it today versus tabling the item?
It can be taken care of today. Council member Casey, the one question I'd have for staff is for the budget. Uh, we'd probably need the motion to include the budget amendment in, in order to, to take that action, but.
It's, it's, it's in a department or a fund, so I can, it can be approved by the city manager.
Then we wouldn't have to worry about that. In, in any case, the action can be taken tonight with that change.
Mr. Casey, thank you. And, uh, council member Pierre, the floor is yours.
My only question I guess would be, because I also love the idea. Um, is there a proposal though to include a amount of time that he'd be, or Fiona would be part of the department as a, to him?
I think so.
Be buying it, then it turns around and leaves six months later.
My motion will also include the one dollar that we are purchasing that dog from Mr. Rosin, which is standard procedure. And then it becomes the property of the city of Series.
Okay, thank you. Uh, bring this back to the public for any comments and or questions, sir. Podium is yours.
Uh, thank you, John Warren, City of Series. A couple of questions. Number one, thank you, Mr. Silveira, for bringing this information, uh, to the public and to the council's attention. I looked through the staff report on this item several days ago, and my question was, this officer came to us from, it did not say where. You've, uh, told us that it came to us from Gustine. And there was nothing in there about the dog, the cost of the dog and that obligation the officer has with the, uh, with that city. If the dog becomes part of another jurisdiction's or department, none of that information was in the staff report. And so I would ask why. And, uh, also, uh, I would like to know the circumstances. Why the city of Gustine allowed that dog that they purchased and they've trained to come with that particular handler. Usually a dog would stay with the department and another handler would be collected or found.
John, I can, I, I can answer all those questions.
Thank you very much.
It, it is actually in the staff report because that's where I found it. So I found all of that information, everything I talked about in the staff report. That's how it came to my attention. And the, the, whether, whether the other agency would keep the dog or not, in the contract, that's why this forty-five hundred dollars amount with Mr. Rosin and the city of Gustine is in place. If they were to keep that, that canine in Gustine, then that wouldn't be in the contract and his go-away contract. So they put that in the contract in case, you know, those, those canines become part of people's families. And that gives the officer the out to be able to take them with, take the dog with them. And we're going to be the one that benefits for that, from that greatly. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions from the public? Yeah, I know there is one hand online, but, uh, before we go to Mr., Mr. Franco, uh, I believe that you had pushed your button, Doug, or is that from earlier?
Yeah, just clarification on the reason the dog left City of Gustine. They had no other dog handler. So that was why Officer.
He was the dog handler who left. Okay, thank you. Mr. Franco, uh,
Mr. Franco. Hi, good, good afternoon. Um, yeah, I just heard the city manager say that the money for the dog is going to come from savings from the animal control contract. Can he, uh, clarify, um, what, what savings? Because, uh, it's my understanding that, uh, the funding for animal control went up by like two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, something, some number like that. So I just wanted to, to get some clarity on that.
Doug, Mr. Franco, uh, we're seeing us savings from, uh, SASSA. Basically, they didn't charge us as much as they said they're going to charge us. So we have some savings in that account quite a bit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other hands?
There are no other hands raised on Zoom.
Is there anybody else? One more time. Okay. Bring this back to the council for motion.
Okay, I'd like to motion that the city of Series reimbursed the city of Gustine that contracted forty-five hundred dollars. Also to purchase the dog from Officer Rosin for one dollar and to approve the budget amendment to move the money from, from animal service over to the general fund to cover this cost, this forty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Yes.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item number thirteen, res- resolution twenty-two-three X X X, approving the two-year agreement between Turlock Youth Sports Foundation, now referred to as Series Adult Flag Football and Series Youth Flag Football in City of Series for the use of the Series River Bluff Regional Park and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I just wanted to thank, uh, to Chavez and Katie for, for getting this contract. I remember I asked Katie a while back about doing something like this and she told me that she'd already was ahead of me and working on it. Uh, my son played at the Turlock Gridiron Football League one year, probably about two or three years ago. Uh, so I know it's a wonderful organization. It's very well run. My only question was who is responsible for, uh, the officials, who hires them, who trains them, who has them on site? Is it us or is it Turlock?
Hi, um, I'm Katie. Uh, the Turlock Group with Fred is going to be the one that is paying for the officials, training the officials and staffing all of the officials.
Awesome. Thank you. That was it. It's a wonderful organization and I'm glad it's coming to Series.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions from council? Seeing none. Does the public have any comments or questions on this item? I have one hand raised, Mr. Franco.
Uh, that was my accident. Sorry.
No worries. I bring this back to council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve consent, item thirteen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Yes.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to public hearing, ordinance number twenty-two-three, an ordinance with the city council of the city of Series amended title thirteen, Water and Sewer Chapter Three, Rates and Charges, Section thirteen, zero threes, twenty, General Rate Provision and Rate Schedule of the City of Series Municipal Code to add subsection E, Multiple Users. Letitia, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we are requesting to add subsection E to the, uh, title thirteen, chapter three, section thirteen of the municipal code, which would read multiple user. If more than one consumer is served for, from one service connection, the owner of the property or his agent shall be required to sign for and guarantee payment for water service at that location. And the owner shall be liable for all water served through such connection. We are requesting this change to the Water and Sewer Ordinance in order to streamline the signup process. Currently, both tenants and owners can request to sign up for utility services at dwellings with multiple units, such as duplexes. The tenant would then be responsible for the services at both units. By making this change to the ordinance, the owner would be required to sign up for services and be responsible for the payment of those services. That is all. I hope you have any questions?
That is all. Uh, thank you for your staff report. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that's, or attending on Zoom that would like to make a comment?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Public period is now closed. Bring this back to the council for questions and discussion. Counsel? No questions and discussion. If that be the case, looking for a motion.
Move to approve number eighteen on the agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Yes.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to new business, item number nineteen, resolution number twenty-two-three, approving the revision to the job description and salary range of the Deputy Director of Public Works Classification. And Human Resources Director Delilah Vasquez will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. Delilah Vasquez is here to present the request for a Deputy Director of Public Works. We are submitting this request because Public Works is the second largest department in the city. The largest department is police and appropriately structured with the chief, a captain, three lieutenants and multiple sergeants. Public Works' existing organizational structure is insufficient to support this breadth of responsibility. There are eight divisions and many of the departments are heavily regulated, which creates an additional layer of complexity and oversight. Some of the departments in addition require twenty-four operations. There is currently a superintendent over water, wastewater, street, storm, storm drain systems. But that doesn't provide adequate support for our recreation, streets, parks, facilities and fleet. In addition, I am concerned with the succession planning. It would be really challenging if we had the position vacant and we wouldn't have appropriate session, succession planning to fill that, um, important role. We made some changes to the classification to align with the more executive role. And, um, the pay also aligns with the deputy finance director's salary range. And we changed the M Qs to now require a bachelor's degree of science and four years of increasingly responsible experience, two of which are the supervisory. two of which are the supervisory experience and a master's degree is highly, is highly desirable, excuse me. In addition to all of this oversight and work, Sam is also working with the SRWA, which is ongoing and has increased the amount of operations and maintenance that is required. So the, we are seeking your support in adding one Deputy Director of Public Works to provide adequate oversight for this department. Thank you. And any questions?
Bring this to the council for any comments and questions. Rosalina and Vera, you have the floor.
Thank you. Upon, I have a couple of concerns because it looked like in the revision of the job description, it actually looked like it took down the education or increased the education but reduced the years of experience. It also looked like it increased salary approximately twenty-one percent. And when I'm looking at page two-eighty-five right now, it looks like it's coming from the general fund, or part of it's coming from the general fund, approximately forty-two thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. So is this in addition to the general fund that was our, the budget that was already approved back in June? Are we adding an additional person to our staffing?
So this position now requires a bachelor's degree instead of an associate's degree. And that education is more of a leadership and executive role. The previous classification was more in alignment with a superintendent, which, which we don't know, which we have already in existence. And so this took that certification, that type of experience requirement away and focused more on a assistant that could help the direct public works with the daily operations and the maintenance of these vast divisions, departments. And I'm not sure the twenty-one percent where you're, what you're referencing.
The difference between the hundred and ten, nine, twenty-eight thousand, the hundred and ten thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars to a hundred and thirty-four, eight, forty-four, which is a difference of just over twenty-one point five percent, which is where that number came from. But that's why I was just kind of, because that's a significant increase, if I'm doing my math correct.
So what we did was we took, I took the class, uh, classification plan and we have a deputy finance director. And this will also be a deputy as well. So it's the same salary plan for that classification and level of expertise.
So it is adding a director to the staffing that is adding an additional staff because it is listed as a revision? And it's not listed as an added staff member?
This is a request to add a Deputy Director of Public Works.
And can I confirm we have the budget and funding for this? Because it looks like general funding from what I could see on here. And that wasn't approved in the budget that we approved prior to the fiscal year.
Doug, quick question. Can you please explain where all the money is coming from? I know it says Water Services, Sewers, Services and General Fund. Can you get a little bit more, elaborate a little bit more?
The majority of the general, I mean, most of this position should be paid for through water and sewer or the enterprise funds, very small part of it is going to be general fund. The general fund is going to be savings or extra money that we receive from the county when we we're budgeting for a five percent increase. We got a six percent increase from the county. But we have adequate money through the general fund for that.
And we have adequate funding in the enterprise funding because I haven't seen the account balance. So I think I emailed you about it and I never got a response. So I don't know what the balance is in that budget to confirm that I have a way to sustain this position.
Both the water and sewer are very healthy accounts for the city support, the Deputy First Director and any more. And all the projects that are required by the city.
Was adequate worker staffing to maintain another director in that department?
Yes.
Thank you.
Delilah, will this increase help us compete? And my question is for this particular position.
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
Will, will this, will that increase help us compete with the markets, what I'm asking?
Yes, and more so, it's really going to provide adequate support to that department. It's just not adequately structured to provide that breadth of support for eight divisions. If you compare it to Police Department, which is the largest department, they only have one more full-time allocated position. And so you have a director and a few supervisors in all of these eight departments and a superintendent over water, but that leaves the other areas. And it's just a tremendous amount of work for one individual to be performing.
Thank you, Delilah. Doug, you have the floor?
Yes, actually, this will make us somewhat competitive in salary range that we provided, which is matching with our Deputy Finance Director position.
Okay. Thank you. Rosalina, you have pressed your button again. The floor is yours.
Is, is there a reason why this wasn't brought to us when we approved the budget for this fiscal year? And why it's being brought after we had approved a balanced budget?
It's my understanding that when the original budget was being processed in the early stages back in January and November, December, is that they were told, they, being the staff, was told to not plan on any increases and maintain the budget as is. That's why it was not brought to you.
That, that was, that was proposed to the, by the previous city manager? Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. Is there any more, Mr. Casey? The floor is yours, sir.
My question is that this two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, that's the salary, but what about the benefits that go along with it? What should we expect those to be?
Two-hundred-and-fourteen is the total compensation.
Total price?
Yes. That, that's salary.
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Casey? Good. Okay, I want to bring this back to it. Does anybody in the public have any comments or questions? You step up to the podium.
John Warren, City of Series, thank you. Councilman Vera, I asked a question. A lady over here did not answer it. Kind of danced around the issue of whether we're actually adding a new employee to city staff. And that's my question. That's not supposed to happen in this budget. And so after the budget is passed, we're sneaking in a new employee. And we're not answering the questions when they're asked of us. And that's not the right way to do business in the city. If we need another person, it should have been discussed at the time the budget was taking place. And the general fund is going to suffer from this because regardless of where the money comes from, from the very rich Water Department or Sewage Department, and my water bill is over two-hundred dollars a month. If any benefit is going to be realized, it should be a reduction in the rates. So the Water Department basically operates on a need basis. It, it shouldn't have a great big excess of funds. The public should realize maybe a reduction in their rates. So I understand the city does need personnel to operate and the departments need personnel to function. But with the budget the way it is and the shortfalls that are in place, I think the council should consider adding another person when they've already decided not to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Just for clarification, Delilah, is, can you go ahead and re?
Restate it?
Restate, yes, please.
We are requesting the addition of a Deputy Director of Public Works to have an adequate structures to support this department.
Okay. And Nubia, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but is this being sneaky? Or is this appropriate? What we're doing here or what staff is recommending?
The issue of adding a position after the budget has been passed is possible. And that is a policy decision by council. If you have the funds to do so, it sounds like the conditions before budget season or when budget season was happening predicated this particular action. But it's not uncommon to adjust budgets after they've been adopted to make necessary changes. And staff is presenting this as a necessary adjustment. Ultimately, it's a council decision, whether it's sneaky or something along those lines. That's, I, I can answer as to whether it's, it's allowed and that it is allowed.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, before we go to council member, is there anybody else in the public that would like to make an additional comment or question? Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Councilmember Martinez, the floor is yours.
Delilah, I have two questions. The first is what's the pay rate for the superintendent? And is the superintendent a position that could do this job adequately? If we added an additional, instead of a deputy director?
The salary rate for the superintendent? Between seven thousand nine-hundred and seventy-one for the first step and nine thousand six-hundred and ninety for the last step. And the superintendent will be reporting to the Deputy Director of Public Works? And I'm sorry, your second question?
Could adding an additional superintendent do the same as adding a deputy director?
Well, a superintendent acts at the chief operator of the water system. They have to have multiple certifications and many, many years of experience. So getting another superintendent would be extremely challenging to get. We're already having challenges hiring a superintendent as it is. And so getting a more executive role that could provide this level of support that's needed in that division would be much more beneficial to the agency.
Thank you.
Okay, I bring this back to the council for a motion.
Move to approve number nineteen on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
No.
Councilmember Vera.
No.
Councilmember Martinez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Solera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries three, two.
Moving on to item number twenty, Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-three, approving the budget amendment to add an American Rescue Plan Act ARPA project approved by Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-three Seventy-Two on June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three for the budget. Letitia, this one is yours again.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you may, as you know, many of the ARPA projects have already been added to the budget. This item will add to the budget any ARPA project that has not already been accounted for. It will so alleviate the need for council items solely for the purpose of approving the budget amendment. If these projects contain contracts that require council approval, they will be added to a future agenda.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions from the council? Rosalina, the floor is yours.
I just want to understand, I just confirm that this is just allowing, it looks like the city manager to go ahead and execute the contracts for approved ARPA funds and not actually approving funds that aren't approved by the council, correct?
These funds have already been approved by the council. We're just adding them to the budget so that they can start doing the projects. Unless there is a contract that needs to be approved by council.
And that wasn't part of the original ARPA discussion when we had this a few council meetings ago?
The, the amendment is not included, no.
Thank you.
Does the council have additional comments or questions? I bring this back to the public for any comments or questions. Seeing none, any hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
I bring this back for a motion.
Move to approve number twenty on the agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Solera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number twenty-one, Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-three, approving the annual report of the Series Downtown Revitalization Area CDRA for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four. Tamara, floor is yours.
Okay, do we have a presentation? So good evening, Mayor and Council. For those that don't know me, my name is Tamara Spaten. I am the Redevelopment and Economic Development Manager. Tonight, I'll be presenting the Series Downtown Revitalization Annual Report for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. First, I'd like to give you a little history. The Series Downtown Revitalization Area was created under the provisions of the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of nineteen-seventy-nine by Ordinance Number Eighty-eight dash seven zero eight, adopted by the Series City Council on September twenty-six, nineteen-eighty-eight. In nineteen ninety-five, pursuant to the authority provided in the Streets and Highway Code three-six-five-zero-zero dash three-six-five-five-one, the City Council approved Ordinance Ninety-five dash eight-four-eight, which added flexibility to the types of uses and activities for which assessment revenue could be used. The Series Downtown Revitalization Area Board, uh, which we call CDRAB, was established by the Series City Council by Resolution Number nineteen eighty-nine dash eighteen. And in nineteen ninety-eight, the Series Planning Commission was formally appointed by the council as the designated advisory board or advisory body as the oversight of the downtown established area. So this is the boundary map. These boundaries gently include, or generally include the area between Sixth Street to the east, Pine Street to the south, El Camino Avenue east to Sixth Street. This area covers approximately ten city blocks and thirty-six businesses. This is our budget worksheet. We started, or I should say, the adopted budget for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. The unencumbered fund balance as of six-thirty, twenty-twenty-two was seventy-three thousand four-hundred-and-eighty-four. Revenue was eleven thousand forty. Expenditures were sixteen thousand fifty-three and ending the year was sixty-eight thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-one. The proposed budget for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, unencumbered fund balance as of six-thirty, twenty-three is sixty-eight thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-one. Projected revenue for this year is nine thousand four-hundred-and-ninety-five and projected expenses twenty-five thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-one. Projected unencumbered fund balance ending in June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four should be around fifty-one thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-five. The deficit revenues are taken from the fund balance. For the method used for calculating levy assessments, revenue is brought in based on businesses with gross receipts of less than fifty thousand per quarter. They would be assessed ten dollars per month, thirty dollars per quarter. Businesses with gross receipts of fifty thousand or more per quarter is assessed twenty-five dollars per month, seventy-five dollars a quarter. Businesses with gross receipts of two-hundred thousand or more per quarter is assessed twenty-five, twenty-five dollars with an additional point zero zero one on gross receipts over two-hundred thousand. Bank savings and loans are assessed a five-hundred-dollar-per-year flat fee. Gasoline service stations with gasoline sales of eight-hundred thousand or more per year are assessed five-hundred per year plus twenty-five dollars monthly. Home occupancy prevents, same as the first three that I mentioned. So if I break down expenses, revenues generated from assessments will fund maintenance of tree gates, landscaping and sidewalks, rotation of decorative promotional banners, pavement of electricity for streetlights and holiday tree lights, facade improvements and incentive programs for the downtown, advertising for downtown and office supplies. And the office supplies are like mailers and envelopes and things like that. So you're probably asking yourself why expenditures are more than the income. Well, rates have not been increased since nineteen eighty-nine. Expenses have increased over the last thirty-four years. And businesses have closed downtown in the area, but we're working hard on replacing those businesses with new ones. These are just a few suggested solutions that I came up with, and that would be increase the number of businesses in Series Downtown Revitalization Area. Also to consider a potential assessment levy increase. Enhance downtown amenities such as speakers to play music, outdoor furniture, water features, and different colored flowers. I think that would draw more people to downtown. Organize more downtown events to raise awareness and additional foot trapping, helping boost gross sales. So additionally, my plan is So additionally, my plan is to start having quarterly meetings with the businesses and property owners to start having rate increase discussions, talk about downtown revitalization ideas, bringing in educational speakers and the opportunity to network with different business owners. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bring this back to the council for comments and question. Councilmember Rosalinda Vera, the floor is yours.
I was reading in the report, it looked like staff report that you had a meeting on August third. I was just wondering if there were any recommendations from any of the businesses at that time that you would like us to hear about?
Um, so that was our first meeting that we put together. We did not have a big attendance. We had two, so, um, but it was a start. And, but we did talk for about an hour with the two individuals that did show up. And most of the conversations were about parking, obviously, um, you know, making downtown more inviting by doing more events or by beautification. And, um, but you know, even the rate increase came up and they saw the return. They were, they were definitely for it, so.
We'll come back to you if you like. Uh, Silveira, the floor is yours.
Yeah, more of a comment than a question. I've talked to a few businesses that are not located on Fourth Street. And because of the lack of attention to their streets, sidewalks, gutters, all things that they're actually being charged for, they would rather not be a part of this. So if we don't figure out how to include all of these people in this map, it's probably not going to go, go very far for very long. Fourth Street gets all the attention. This street, Sixth Street over the, just past Magnolia seems to get little attention through this organization. So just want everybody to know that everybody's not on board downtown and they see the improvements on Fourth Street and they think that a lot of the attention goes to Fourth Street, which they're probably right. Uh, we probably need to look at this whole, this whole revitalization area and the borders and figure out if it's really correct, what it should be. Regarding the service they're getting, they're just not happy. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and to that, I think having and starting these conversations, including all the downtown business owners and the property owners and meeting quarterly, you know, we can get this kind of feedback. We can get everybody on board and hopefully together we can move forward.
Yeah, and so the conversation about rate increases at this point is probably not a good place to start with the businesses that are not.
Yeah, it would be a year out before we did something like that.
Vice Mayor, is there any way that you can communicate those folks with Tamara so they can, you can get that insight? Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Casey, the floor is yours.
Vice Mayor.
But he already finished. You're up, Casey. Vice Mayor is, is done. You are up, sir.
Right, he covered it.
Oh, he, oh, he covered it? Is that what you're saying that he covered it? Thank you. Rosalinda, you are up. You should remember your question. Okay, the floor is yours.
Um, I was just wondering, were we able to, um, obtain a grant to cover some of the redevelopment in downtown area?
We, we do not have a grant, but we do have some ARPA funds that were allocated in the first round that we will be using to help do some things downtown.
And is there certain issues or concerns that the downtown businesses are having that maybe we can address that are not part of this downtown funding?
No, I, you know, like I said, I think parking was a big issue and, you know, part of that conversation, Mr. Delhart did show up at the meeting and, um, gave some really good input. And, uh, and then I think her name's Letitia from the flower shop. So between the two of them and, and Irene was there. Um, you know, we had some really good conversations about parking. Mr. Delhart owns a parking, couple of parking spots, we found out. Um, in addition to his building on the corner, the, the bank building. So, you know, he gave some really good ideas. Like I said, I think if we can get people in the room together and start having these conversations, I think maybe we can all work together to come up with some solutions. Thank you.
Okay. Take this to the audience for any questions.
Good evening, John Warren, City of Series. Can any of you read the information provided in the handout? Even with my reading glasses on, this stuff over here where it says adopted budget twenty-two, twenty-three on this page, you can't read it. I need a magnifying glass to read those, that information. And we have the same problem when the, uh, when the care team and stuff, this information that's provided for the public, it's just a waste of time to put on this paper because you can't read it. I mean, I'm going to have to take it home and use my magnifying glass and that's probably not going to happen. And it's hard to read it when it's projected on screen. So, you know, it's good information for the general public to have, but if they can't read the figures, look across and see what the proposals are. Um, it, you're not doing the public a great service.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there any additional comments or questions? I see a hand is raised, Mr. Franco.
Oh, yeah. Um, I, I like the idea of, uh, having more events, uh, downtown. And I was just wondering, uh, if there were any ideas already, uh, in place? What kinds of, what kinds of events would be happening?
Yes, Mr. Franco. Uh, so we've been working closely with the Chamber of Commerce and, um, actually our Parks and Rec Department. And for the holidays, we are already talking about possibly having a tree lighting downtown at Whitmore Park, where we can light the tree, bring in hot cocoa for the kids, the families and have some, you know, singing, um, and do more things like that. We've also talked about just, I know the chamber is looking at a wine straw and we're looking at a possible farmer's market, um, the chamber is. So I think together, um, you know, we've all been collaborating and trying to come up with ideas to do more downtown just for visibility and to get, um, like I said, foot traffic down there.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, all awesome ideas. You can sign me up for, for all of those if they happen.
Yeah, Franco, if you have some ideas, feel free to email Tamara. Thank you. Okay, that being said, I'll bring this back to the council for a motion.
Move to approve number twenty-one on the agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We now move to a five-minute recess to allow those who need to use the restroom. Five-minute recess.
Where else?
Approving the establishment of the new limits, the city business cards issued of employees and rescinding resolution ninety-one dash one fifty-one. And this goes to our finance director, Letitia. She will present the item.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is requesting an increase to the city-issued credit card limits. Credit cards are issued to employees for business purchases. The current maximum credit card limit is four thousand dollars and was established in nineteen ninety-seven. Since then, the cost of goods and services has increased. Employees who use the credit card to book training and travel for multiple employees, in addition to their day-to-day purchases, have experienced that these limit, this limit is not sufficient. Therefore, we are requesting the council approve a new credit card limit of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Letitia. I'll bring this back to the council for any comments and questions.
I have a question.
Sir?
The different levels of supervision have different limits.
Yes.
Thank you, council member. Daniel Martinez, the floor is yours.
I have a question. Would this be something you suggest that maybe we, on the motion, revisit every five years to see where we are, maybe then be able to adjust for inflation or any other?
Yes, we could definitely do that.
Thank you.
And by, by, I'm sorry, Rosalinda, I know I saw your button. By approving something like this, this gives you guys the ability to be more flexible because there's times that you would have to possibly use multiple credit cards.
Correct.
Okay, that was my question. Rosalinda, the floor is yours.
I think it's just kind of tagging along with the last comment about, is this just increasing the amount for just one classification or one level of, or is it for everyone that we're increasing it?
It wouldn't be, it would give us the, the flexibility to increase someone's credit card limit up to ten thousand. So it would be determined on basically the usage. The, the ten thou, ten thousand dollar limit would be for those who, like, like I mentioned, make purchases for multiple other employees. If you're just, you know, employee going out to Ace Hardware, you're not going to need a ten thousand dollar limit. So it would be a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Okay, council member Casey, the floor is yours.
Right now, we, you know, the monthly report runs thirty-five. Something less than forty thousand dollars. Once you win. How do we know that when we're spending ten thousand dollars times five department? That is within the budget? How do you control that?
Well, these purchases are all budgeted purchases.
All budgeted, why do we need to use the credit card? Like to travel.
Right, so yeah, so they still need to, to make the purchase on a credit card to like a hotel reservation or, or purchases like that.
Okay, and, and what, repeat again, what's the limit now?
Right now, it's four thousand.
Thank you.
Okay, I take this back to the audience for any comments and question. I see no members of the public here at the moment. And bring this to online. Is there any hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Bring this back to the city council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve these, approving establishing new limits for city business credit cards issued to employees and receding resolution ninety-one fifty-one, and that we revisit it in six years?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries four-one.
Item number twenty-three, resolution number twenty-two-three, approving the agreement with Soto Mayor and Associates LLP to perform an annual audit of the City of Series for fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, and June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Letitia, this is also yours. Got all kinds today.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, there was a hand raised. Was this hand raised as we were done, or?
It was definitely.
Oh, it was an accident. Okay, Ms. Flower, I'm sorry. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. The city is required to have an independent audit firm perform an audit of the city's financial transactions on an annual basis. The city has been audited by the same firm for the past twelve years. While there's no requirement to change audit firms, it is best practice to occasionally change firms. Requests for proposal packets were mailed to several auditing firms, and we received three proposals in response to our request. Of the three firms, Soto Mayor and Associates was selected based on cost and experience. The total cost for the three fiscal years is a hundred and forty-three thousand four forty-five. And they will be performing audits for the, the previous fiscal year that just ended, the current year that we are in, and the next fiscal year. Questions?
Bring this back to the council for any comments and questions. Councilmember Casey, will you try to push a button, sir? You don't have to push it. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I see they're, they're part of the Zoom. When should we expect the, the audit, you know, ending June twenty, twenty twenty-three here? What kind of service do we expect from the, the new accounting?
I, I did speak with them, and they, we, they have assured me that we should be able to be at a December thirty-first deadline for the report to be finished.
Thank you.
Any other council members, any comments or questions? Any members of the public? Seeing none in person, anybody online that would like to make a comment?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, bring this back to the council for a motion approval.
Move to approve item twenty-three?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Discussion items, item number twenty-four. Preliminary report on the housing element update, information only. Holmes? This one's yours.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. We have our consultant, Andy Flower. He is on Zoom. But I'll, I'll introduce him. He, he works for EMC Planning, which is the, the consultant that the city chose to help us with this housing element update. Just very briefly, for Andy has his present short presentation. And we have a video that's about six minutes long that describes what a housing element is. So I'll kind of forego that and let you watch the video. But we're excited to have this, and the main point I'd like to get across is that we're currently in a public comment period for this housing element. We've had one community meeting. We've also presented this to the planning commission, and we'd love to get your feedback. We know that there are things in this plan that need to be updated. And there are some things that we've already caught that, that we're looking at, that we're going to be working on before we submit this to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So I will if we can start the presentation and hand it over to Andy. Thank you, Andy.
Welcome, Andy.
Thank you very much. Agenda elements. So we'll just have a, a quick overview. We'll talk about RENA, or Regional Housing Needs Allocation, the demographics and needs analysis for the City of Series. We'll just touch on pro-housing designation, and then we'll have a sites overview. We'll introduce you to our website. If you haven't checked it out yet, we'd love for you to see what we've got there, and we'll talk about timeline. Next slide, please. So just so that we're all on the same page, and for anyone who's joining the conversation, learn about the housing element for the first time tonight, it's important to know that the housing element is a required piece of the full general plan. So it's a chapter for the general plan. It's required by state law for us to update this every eight years. And it's important to also understand that the City of Series doesn't necessarily build the housing, but we together, the, the city and, and with us as your consultants, we make sure that the programs are in place so that that housing can be built. Next slide, please. This is the video that Christopher was just mentioning. This is available on our website. For the sake of time this evening, we'll, we'll not watch this unless you'd like to come back to it afterwards, or if you want to speak up now, if you'd prefer to see it, let us know.
I'd just like to reiterate that the link to this video is on the city website under the planning division. If you look at the housing element, we've got the link up there.
Thank you, Christopher. Are we ready for this?
I think we can, I think we'll move forward without watching.
Without watching, so okay, for everybody's information, you can see.
At the pleasure of the council.
I, I think that everybody has access unless, I guess voted against. Anybody okay with just going to the link later on?
Is this the one that was at the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, we've already seen people, in the purpose of saving time, moving on.
So one of the main focuses on the eighth, the sixth cycle housing element that we're working towards with this update is the incorporation of affordable housing. And just generally how that's defined is if you're able to spend less than thirty percent of your gross income on housing and your utilities. It's important for many reasons that we make sure that affordable housing could be built within your community. We, we want to encourage workers to live closer to their jobs. We want to be able to support families, and especially those with disabilities, and for residents to be able to age in place. For Series, we also want to enable the next generation of local families to be able to afford living here in Series into the future, even after the ACE train starts service. Next slide, please. So this is a little background before we get into understanding how, how many housing units are anticipated as a need within the City of Series. When we talk about these different levels of affordability, these all are relative to the area media income, and you can see below what that, what that defined dollar amount is. And then we have examples. So for instance, if somebody is working a full-time, forty hours a week job, making minimum wage, their income range would then be thirty-two thousand two hundred forty, which would put them in the, the very low category. Particularly if, if, yes, thank you. And so we look within the housing element. As we do our update, we forward a, a little bit of a mirror. We make sure that we understand who makes up Series, and that's always changing. So with every eight-year cycle, we learn a little more about what that, what those trends are. So just real quick, we can see that this is a majority Latino community, and the unemployment rate is at about twelve percent. Owner households are sixty-one percent, while the renter households are thirty-nine percent. Married couple family households make up a little over half. And about forty-two percent of households are above moderate income earners, while forty-seven percent are lower income earners. Persons with disability, we noticed that that is a rather high population. So this all helps us understand how we might be able to support folks that are in the community now so that they can continue to live within Series. Next slide, please. This is an important piece of the six-cycle housing element. We need to understand how much overcrowding and cost burdened households are there, because these are, this is part of our housing needs analysis, and it helps us know what kind of programs we want to incorporate in with this plan so that we can help to turn this around. Next slide, please. We know that the median home value has gone up throughout the state of California for the City of Series, and since twenty-nineteen, that home value has gone up a little more than thirty percent. Pretty much on par with neighboring jurisdictions. Next slide, please. If you are a house owner and a homeowner, and, and see that the majority are homeowners in the City of Series, you, you might be far enough outside of the rental market, maybe not know how much costs have gone up for those who rent. It's gone up by forty percent for a one-bedroom, and you can see it's especially gone up five in the City of Series for just larger homes, for, for larger families, and for the very small studios. Next slide, please. So this is a, a very important pivotal piece of the six-cycle that, that differentiates it, differentiates the needs for the housing element plan from the fifth cycle until now. So it's understood throughout all of California, there has been segregation that has occurred over time in almost all of our communities. And so the state is now requiring that we look closely at that. Next slide, please. And with this new law, AB six-eighty-six, it's also referred to as affirmatively furthering fair housing. Next slide, please. We, we need to make sure that we examine existing and future policies, plans and programs, so that we can create meaningful actions to proactively change and promote more inclusive communities. So we've taken this very seriously with the City of Series, and we've incorporated it also with our hopeful application for pro-housing community designation. Next slide, please. So this is just a snapshot of the meaningful actions that we've drafted for Chapter Two, which is our programs and policy chapter. It's the ways in which we are looking to overcome the housing needs that we have analyzed. So you'll see here, pro-housing, that's a piece that I just mentioned. We need to clarify and expedite permit processing procedures. And, and that's just in part also just in preparation for the growth that we can anticipate with the ACE train being connected to Series. We want to encourage a housing rehabilitation program so that maintenance for existing homes and households can be subsidized when, when needed, and that housing for special needs populations, that there's an increased focus for that. And just overall fair housing, it's important that, that there's an understanding, and so therefore, education often is, is a part of our plans so that folks can understand what their rights are when it comes to fair housing, both landlords and, and renters. Next slide, please. So the pro-housing designation, I've mentioned it a couple of times. This is an exciting new program that's launched, that's been launched by the state. And what we're noticing is that it's becoming a prerequisite. Also, it affords preference, and in some cases, additional points when a community like Series becomes designated as a pro-housing community. So we've incorporated this approach together with staff and found a way where, where we can go ahead and make sure that the programs that we're putting in place, that they align with those that are the requirements for the pro-housing designation. Next slide, please. So right now, our best guess is that we have about thirty-six points towards the thirty-point minimum. Again, this is a brand-new program, so getting in the ground floor is advantageous. And it's a program that's intended for both large and small communities. And next slide, please. Here you can see a quick glimpse of the programs that we see as an overlap. So they help us to tend to the needs that we saw on an earlier slide, and it also helps the City of Series to be competitive for this pro-housing designation. I won't walk through all of these, but I, I just want to give a snapshot. Next slide, please. So we've come all the way through this presentation, and here we are at the number. Often, this is what's meaningful to a lot of people to understand what is that number that we're trying to achieve. And at the City of Series, it's three thousand three hundred sixty-one. That's not including the recommended buffer. That's typically between fifteen and twenty percent. If we can get it to a hundred and fifty percent, then we get extra points for that pro-housing designation. But as you can see here, it's, it's not just a number of houses. It's, it's broken down into affordability levels. So altogether, we've got as much as maybe sixty percent of the housing units are altogether in the affordable categories of very low income, low income, and moderate income. Next slide, please. So this is our first draft map. We've been working with staff to recognize that there's, there's some sites that were part of the fifth cycle housing element that maybe are, are no longer serving Series for those goals for housing. And so we've, we've, as Christopher mentioned, we're, we're already beginning to make edits to this draft map and, and entire plan. So we would love to hear from you if, if you do want to get engaged and involved and share your comments that can help guide our, our processes as we go forward. To be clear, though, tonight, this is informational, and then we'll be asking you to go to our website to share those comments. Next slide, please. So Series, of course, is in a great position between the areas here that we have, that have recently been annexed, and that there's a specific plan. It's obvious that this community has put a lot of time and energy into thinking about the future of, of how the city will grow over time. And we applaud the fact that you've also included some medium and, and some higher-density residential. That helps us a lot when we are accommodating for those anticipated affordable units. There's, there's two different ways to look at that RENA, or Regional Housing Needs Allocation. One way is with the plan, we are projecting those numbers, and then over this eight-year cycle, then we'll be sort of, Christopher and his team will be checking the boxes to report back to HCD to, to show progress with each year with the progress report. What we want to make sure of as much as we can is that we set you up for success so that those affordable units can be built, not only because of the, the proxy for density that we have for these higher density areas, but we're also looking into other innovative ways, including the encouragement for ADUs to be built in some of these new areas of single-family homes. Next slide, please. Whitmore Ranch is another specific plan, of course, that, that you've been working hard at making sure is, is put together in a way that makes sense for your community, and we've incorporated that with the housing plan. Next slide, please. So the, we've had the, the thirty-day public review period, and we're incorporating those public comments. Of course, we're always welcoming additional comments, but that thirty-day period of comments is something that will be put together as a report for HCD along with our initial response for those comments. Some comments may have a, a great impact in, in helping to change our thoughts on some policies or programs, and, and other comments might be helpful background. So we, we are trying to make sure that folks understand how we are using their comments as we go forward. So we'll be consolidating those public comments and working with staff to make sure that our HCD submittal, we should be clear about what the submittal is. This is not the final draft. This is our initial draft. AB two-fifteen came around just as the six-cycle housing element. AB two fifteen came around just as the sixth cycle housing element was beginning to be understood by the Bay Area and it has absolutely changed everybody's timeline because it now is expected that there would be this thirty day public review period and then an initial draft would go to HCD before we can have their comments and support and understanding. So we look forward to bringing forward those comments to you after their ninety day review. Next slide, please. Here we have a QR code. We also have a link. This can take you to our, our housing element webpage. And you'll see that there's an obvious place where you can include comments and where you can download the plan if you haven't already. And we're just very grateful to the staff and, and all of the support that they've given us and many, many hours and workshops in understanding better about what has come before now with the fifth cycle. And, and that's given us a really great launch into this six cycle housing element. This is a living document and we just look forward to your participation so that it can, it can be improved with your guidance. Next slide, please. Here we have contact information for Christopher Marjorie and for myself. You're welcome to contact us directly or you can share contacts through that website that we just shared. And last slide, next slide, please. So we invite everyone to stay involved, the council members, public, everyone listening. Please share any comments and, and advice that you might have. Within that website, we also have a property owner interest form. This has been helpful with, with other communities we've worked with. We, we haven't received very much response to this yet, but please know that that can be a powerful way to throw your hat in the ring if, if maybe you're a property owner and, and you would like to be a part of this solution for creating housing in these next eight years. So thank you for participating in this informational process today. And thank you for, Christopher. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Bring this back to the council for any questions, Mr. Viera, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I guess I'll just start it at the top. Now have emails now been sent to the shareholders since our key shake stakeholders in series? Cause I believe with the last time it had been sent out to our developers, realtors and other key stakeholders theories.
We did do an email blast out to stakeholders and there's a big list of people that were contacted based off of the housing element update that we did last time. And new people that we added.
Thank you. Um, now the survey online, when I looked at it, it looked like it was just kind of addressing what kind of needs, but it didn't really have an area for I'm putting in additional comments such as maybe adding mixed use or not using the industrial areas in key busy intersections. Cause I saw that there's some industrial zoning in a very large intersection and that kind of concerns me because it's in a housing area plus it's zone industrial and I just hate to see diesels coming through my, even my own front yard and trying to set it up that way.
Is, is the location you're talking about on Packet?
No, it's not. It's the one we talked about. It's that one still, just because I didn't see that on there. It's just south of Packet. I didn't see that there was, I just, when I did the survey, cause I did do the survey about adding comments about what uses that I may need. It's just asked like where I live, how I live, I rented that kind of stuff. Now what steps do you need us or there's that we could do as council members to become more pro housing? Cause I did see several cities already approved on the list, such as the city of Fresno, um, cause that does open immediate funding and additional funding to the state. And since there's only a handful that are currently approved, I would love to try to get to the front of the line before it gets a longer.
That's a good idea and that's our goal as well is to get that designation as soon as we can. And it'll help us be more competitive in our grant seeking.
So is there something specific that you're going to bring forward to us to consider before this gets approved? Cause we won't have anything back from HUD until the beginning of the year.
So the, the process moving forward includes finishing, uh, receiving all the comments. And by the way, the, the website that was posted, um, if you want to take the survey, it's about halfway down the page. If you want to provide comments, it's a little bit further down the page. Um, so there is a comment button. You can talk about whatever you want to talk about there. Related to the housing element, of course. So after receiving all the comments, the next part of the process is to submit that draft housing element to HCD or their required review. If they have any comments or questions or feedback for us, then we'll address that. Once HCD has everything, once they're good with it, they'll, they'll send us a letter called a ready to certify letter. Um, at that point, we will bring the housing element to the planning commission or their recommendation to the city council. And after those two bodies are, um, have approved it, then it will become final. That would, at that point, it becomes the final document.
Are we able to make changes if we're not? Okay. Or maybe we have recommendations even after it's been submitted for approval? Cause I'm a little confused on.
So it's possible to, so the, the time to make changes and to, and to give comment is right now. It is possible to make changes afterward, but that will require us to go back to HCD. So we're, we're trying to avoid a lot of, of back and forth with long review times. So if possible, if we could get comments now and we're hoping that from the community meeting we had and presenting this to planning commission and presenting it tonight. And the communication and outreach that we've done, we can get the outreach now, uh, make those changes, submit it to HCD. And then once they're good with it and send us, uh, ready to certify, then we'll bring it back to planning commission and city council.
Okay. So we don't see it till basically it's been approved by everyone else and we really have no choice. Is that kind of what I'm understanding?
Well, not quite. I mean, that's, that's part of the reason we wanted to, um, come early in the process during the comment period and bring it to council so that we made sure that we get your comments.
Thank you.
Christopher, is it possible that even after this meeting, we submit some recommendations to your email and that way, because the process is ongoing, correct? So even if we don't have any recommendations at the moment, that is a possibility, correct?
Yes, we, the, the public comment period is still open and we'd be happy to receive your comments.
Okay.
And so it doesn't close at the end of this meeting. You can, you can talk to us after.
Okay. Uh, any additional comments or questions from the city council? Bring this back, bring this back to the public for any comments and or questions. Is there any hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. And this was an information only, correct?
Correct.
But we are complete. Thank you very much. Moving on to council member referrals. Are there any council members that have any referrals at this time? Was the case of the floor yours? Oh, no. Okay. Mr. Martinez?
Yes, I, I have one. Uh, the mayor and I, National Night Out, we were walking from the park across the street, you know, and, and families are coming across the street. There's no stop signs. There's no way to get across safely right there at the park by the, by the fire station. Is that something we can look into? Maybe putting a stop sign or a crosswalk with a light to make it safer for people trying to get across the street to our events like our concerts in the park, our national night out and things like that.
Yes, sir. We can look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to reports. I do have some reports today. I received a letter from TNT fireworks, uh, reading, uh, Mayor Lopez, thank you and the council. So the city of series as well as the series police department and fire department for the support of the dozen and dozens of groups that sell consumer fireworks regard Louis. My second, uh, report is from Stanislaus Council of Government at the August ninth, Stan Cog Policy Board meeting. We were honored to have chairperson from the California Transportation Commission, CTC and attended and provided us with an update on, on state transportation funding. Shirley Anne Eager from Fresno was very complimentary about the Stanislaus region and specifically mentioned the active transportation program, ATP. Funding that the CTC approved in June that included two bicycle and pedestrian improvements projects for the city of series. Number one, series building on active transportation connectivity and access within the city. Two million, eight hundred fifty eight thousand. And the second was the series improving pedestrian safety on Central Avenue and Hackett Road corridor, two million, four hundred ninety five thousand. The Stan Cog Policy Board also received an annual report from the measure L oversight committee on the financial audits and compliance audits that have been done for all agencies that receive measure L funding, which includes the city of series measure L. You will remember is the half cent tax measure approved by the voters in Stanislaus County in two thousand and sixteen to fund transportation improvement projects in the region. The report stated that the annual financial audits were completed at each agency for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two, and the audits were all good. Series representative on the measure L oversight committee is Dave Brad, who we want to thank for serving on this oversight committee. Mr. Pratt, I want to personally thank you for being on that committee. And that is all. Council member. Okay. I do see all the buttons while I was looking down. So we'll start off with, uh, Vice Mayor Severo, what's your report? The floor is yours.
A quick report on our fire departments committee meeting, quarterly committee meetings met on Thursday. The, uh, the contract we have with Modesto Fire is just going fantastic. If you go onto the Modesto Fire website, you can see a version of this. Instead of the yearly update on how it's going, they, uh, came up with this magazine, I don't know what you would call it, report on all of their agencies that they're currently servicing and also this week, there's going to be people from Modesto Fire in Kansas City accepting award that only fifteen agencies in the country are, are going to get this award. And that's for their efforts in, in regionalization. So it's been a fantastic thing for us in series. It's, it's even worked out better than I ever dreamed. And on a sour note, but a congratulatory note, Chief Ernst, who got us all through this, uh, process retired today. So they're in the process of naming, uh, another chief and that could or may or may not affect our chief situation here in series, but things are great with Modesto Fire and, and that contract is going fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Move on to Ms. Rosalinda. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, just kind of recap what's been going on since the last meeting. Went to the EDAC or the Economic Development Action Committee for the county. We're currently in the thirty day public comments regarding uh, community economic development, both in the county and the city. So if anyone does have any comments, please talk to, I believe it was Tamara, the city manager or myself. We're both our representatives and I believe the mayor is also on EDAC. I'm happy to take those comments back. Um, schools are starting this week and we had back to school tonight. So just make sure you allow extra time. Um, this week I just want to also thank Martinez, SWAT and fire that helped us deliver backpacks and balloons to various communities here in the series community. I also dropped off backpacks at various schools, including backpacks with supplies for our unhoused students that are still living in series. Um, and I also look forward to the start of the school year and the development of this year's series youth advisory. Um, and then lastly, series partnership had a meeting last week regarding the view of the Thompson place on their first year anniversary of opening the homeless or the unsheltered location for single parents and their families. Um, so they do allow single moms there with their children. So they just did a recap. And then they're going to be having an upcoming walk, I believe in October to bring awareness to suicide and mental health disorders. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Mr. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Smear, I think my button was from earlier when I was making my suggestion about the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Also, I'm, I have nothing to report.
Oh, you have nothing? That was from earlier? Okay. Yeah. Cause I looked up and I seen a bunch of red lights. So.
Actually, you know, I, I will speak about the SWAT that we went to the other night.
Sure, absolutely. That's great.
So I, I would like to thank SWAT for inviting me and, and the mayor was out there as well. It was a fantastic evening. It was a great way, uh, for them to enjoy and relax and, and enjoy themselves and honor people that retired and people that they had lost this year. And it was also great to see so many businesses in the community donate items for auction for them so they could raise money and continue to, to do what they do for our community. So I do appreciate being in attendance at that.
Thank you. Moving on, city manager, any reports, sir?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Thirty?
I think to report tonight.
Okay. Anyone from the departments, Mr. Silver, before we go on to, did you want to add something? Okay. Sorry about that. Departments. Seeing them. Okay. Is there any representatives from the county in attendance today?
No, it doesn't appear to be anyone on Zoom.
Okay. Just, uh, council member, you have one more thing? Go for it.
So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that was involved with concerts in the park series this year. It was fantastic. We averaged probably four or five hundred people every week. Great food vendors, drink vendors. The bands were fantastic. The weather cooperated most of the time. Got hot the last couple of weeks, but we still had like four hundred people out there when it was a hundred and five degrees. So it was a fantastic year, already in the planning stages for next year. And also looking forward to October's trunk, a trunk or treat. At Whitmore Park, the Parks and Rec does amazing job with that. And already I'm sure they're probably way into it, but Christmas tree lane opening. And then like Tamara said, if we can do a tree lighting or something like that, the beginning of December, right along with all of that, that'd be fantastic. So concerts in the park was great. Looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that being said, there is no closed sessions. This meeting is now adjourned. God bless everyone. Have a wonderful evening.